Good evening. My name is Robyn Jankowicz and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NBUSD Board of Education is holding a special board meeting tonight that all can participate remotely via Zoom or in person here in the boardroom. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at NBUSD.org/Board. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Isidra Menkos and Francisco Mesa. May we have one of our interpreters translate the directions on our English channel so our Spanish-speaking families can hear the instructions?
Buenas noches. La reunión de hoy va a tener servicios de interpretación simultánea en español. Para acceder a los servicios de interpretación, en breves momentos van a ver ustedes en la parte de abajo de su pantalla de Zoom un icono de un globo terráqueo. Pueden hacer clic en esa imagen y allí podrán escoger el idioma Spanish o español. Si ustedes están usando el teléfono móvil, van a ver en su pantalla tres puntitos suspensivos y más o more. Al hacer clic allí van a poder escoger los servicios de interpretación. Gracias.
Thank you. May we please start with the attendance roll call from Vera Morales', executive assistant?
Yes, student or member bit is absent tonight. Trustee Jankowicz?
Present.
Trustee Gracia?
Present.
Trustee Water?
Present.
Trustee Riser? Trustee Gonzalez?
Present.
Trustee Shu?
Present.
Trustee Dooley?
Here.
Quorum present. Thank you.
Thank you very much Vera. Today's meeting is a special meeting of the board and there will be no public comment on non-agenda items. You may make public comment on agendized items only. We are called to order at 5:04. Trustee Water, would you like to lead us in the flag salute this evening?
Indeed, yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is live streamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced and located on the district webpage at NBUSD.org. The public can join the virtual board meeting remotely via Zoom. Participation instructions and the process for public comment can be found on the district webpage. May I please get a motion for approval of the special session agenda?
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Dooley. All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda passes. This is a special board meeting this evening, so we have a singular presentation. It's under instructional services and it's our special education report. On October 14, 2021, in alignment with Board Annual Priority Number Four, the NBUSD Board of Education approved a contract for Strategic Consulting for Schools to review NBUSD's implementation of the recommendations for the Fiscal Crisis Management Assessment Team FICMAT report completed during the 2016-2017 school year. Strategic Consulting for Schools conducted an analysis of the FICMAT recommendations that have been implemented in the district and identified key areas that our Special Education Department needed additional technical support. The analysis will provide guidance on fiscal impact, programmatic efficiency, and the requirements of federal and state law. The findings and recommendations in the updated analysis provide the basis for a comprehensive implementation plan for special education to improve our programmatic efficiency. No action at this time. The report recommendations have been submitted for approval as an action item on this board meeting agenda. So, we welcome Strategic Consulting for Schools and I believe, are you gonna, that, go ahead.
Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings will be introducing the item. Ready to?
We are ready to go. Okay.
Thank you so much, President Jankowicz. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, President Jankowicz, Board Trustees, Superintendent Lusetti, and the NBUSD community members who are present. Tonight you will hear about the detailed report completed by Strategic Consult- Consultation for Schools on NBUSD's implementation of the recommendations for the Fiscal Crisis Management and Assessment Team, or FICMAT as it is commonly known as, that was completed during the 2016-2017 school year. Strategic Consult- Consultation for Schools provides comprehensive studies in fiscal and programmatic efficiencies in areas of need established by the educational organization they work with. Typical areas include fiscal, program delivery, budget development, and monitoring interdepartmental communication and organizational infrastructure for special education, as well as providing technical assistance in program development, compliance monitoring, job coaching, strategic planning, professional development, and in all aspects of special education. I want to welcome Joanne Murphy and Jackie Kirk Martinez, who are two consultants that you will hear from tonight. Ms. Murphy has extensive background in special education administration. She was a team member during the original NBUSD FICMAT study that was completed in 2017. During her 45-year career in public education, she has been a classroom teacher, SELPA administrator, and an executive director of special education. Ms. Murphy currently serves as a FICMAT consultant and has completed over 90 FICMAT studies in the field of special education, as well as some private studies throughout the state. Presenting alongside her is Dr. Jacqueline Kirk Martinez. Dr. Kirk Martinez currently serves as a consultant for FICMAT, as well as completing independent assessments. With over 33 years in education, Dr. Kirk Martinez has served as an executive director in special, in student, I'm sorry, executive director and student support services for a school district, as well as county schools, and as a coordinator for SELPA. The presentation will cover the essential elements in the 74-page report that was completed by Ms. Murphy and Dr. Kirk Martinez. Before Ms. Murphy begins the presentation, I would like to thank the Special Education Department Administrative Team, led by Director Lusetti, and all of our special education staff who have worked to implement the FICMAT recommendations since 2017, and also for their efforts through interviews and focus groups and the information they provided to Strategic Consult- Consultation for Schools so they can, so that they could complete this report that you will hear about this evening. And with that, I would like to introduce Ms. Joanne Murphy, who will begin the presentation. George, George, Mr. Michaels, can you go ahead and pull the slide presentation up for me, please? Thank you so much. And with that, I will pass to Joanne Murphy, who will begin the presentation.
Okay. Thank you so much and good evening, board members. We're happy to be here to kind of share with you the results of our study and we're have, great to have the opportunity to work with such a wonderful staff and school district. So, next slide. So, our purpose, as you already noted, was to take a look at the district's progress on the FICMAT study recommendations. And in any special education study, there are going to be some recommendations that FICMAT makes generally to all districts, but may or may not apply to your district. So, there were some, there were some of those that were not implemented, but a good percentage of the of the goals and recommendations were met. So, our purpose was to analyze the district programs and also to look at key areas that need the technical assistance for the future. Next slide. You'll remember in our previous meeting, we talked about the question that board members frequently have, and that is that IDEA is a federal mandate and, but it's only funded at a 17% level. Yet, school districts are required to meet the standard of free and appropriate public education. They frequently wonder, as you might, whether we're offering programs above our obligation, at the standard level for our obligation, or below the level. So, hopefully, I think that this report will document well for you those areas that are in each of those categories, and the district may operate always to function above the level. However, that's dependent on whether or not you have the resources to do so, because there's no additional funding that comes with that. Next slide. Okay, I think we have a problem. This-
This might be the, this, I think we have, this is not the revised slide presentation, Mr. Michaels?
No, it's not. It's got me a little off track here because it's not the right, it's not the right sequence.
Mr. Michaels, let me, let me send you the updated one. Give me a sec.
Thank you.
Um, Mrs. Murphy, if you want to continue, I know that there was a one that, that there's just some minor differences on that particular slide. Give me a second, I'm gonna find it.
Okay. We may have one that we can send you if that would be faster. Jackie, do you have one available?
I do, but Pat probably can talk about, can send it. Do you want to just talk about the process? That was the next slide.
That is the next slide.
Okay. All right. We use an extensive process for all of our studies, so the information doesn't come from one, one single source. First of all, we use a document review and analysis, and in doing that, we look at approximately 85 documents from your district, various charts, all elements of the SELPA local plan procedural handbook, education codes, industry standards, any bargaining unit agreements that you have for both classified and certificated. And we also look at your student information system for special education that contains all of the IEPs for students that are both served in the county office and also served in the district K-12. In that, we were able to go in and look individually, and of course, we're not looking at all of the students' IEPs, but we were able to get a random sample of particular areas that we were looking at. In addition to that, we do extensive interviews with all stakeholders of special education. And it's kind of surprising that, you know, special ed is one of those areas that has a, the, the unique opportunity to touch every department and every school site in some capacity. So, all staff, including the superintendent, cabinet, district administration, school site administrators, teachers, counselors, instructional aides, staff at all levels in the district. There were representatives from each of those districts that were chosen by the district, not by the consultants. And they did a really good job of kind of mixing each of the groups and giving us a good random sample. In addition to that, we also interviewed staff from the county office. We interviewed the SELPA director, the North County, not North County, I'm sorry, the Napa County Office of Education Director, the County Coordinator of Special Ed Programs in the county, teachers and speech pathologists from the county office programs, and then we accessed the, the student information. Are we loading up the new one?
Yes, it's taking a minute. My computer is being very slow, of course, because that's what happens when you're ready to present. See, it's just taking forever to load. There we go.
Okay, this is, this is it. And I'm on slide five.
Is that the right date?
Great. There we go. Right there. Okay, so, I'm kind of flipping back to the discussion about the FICMAT recommendation. So, one of the questions that you had for us was, to what extent has the FICMAT study been implemented from 2017? And we found that roughly 80% of the recommendations have been implemented or are in progress. And as I said, some were not implemented, but that's not necessarily a negative for the district. It's because maybe those recommendations didn't quite fit within your structure or weren't appropriate for your needs. The next is that a single, significant improvement in the organizational operations of the special education office were very evident, and the staff was very articulate in expressing how much things had improved, how much they improved the responsiveness, support, and communication from the director of special education, and they did not have that experience in the past. There are still more effective systems that need to be in place, but in general, it was a very positive response, and I think the district did a fine job in, in processing those recommendations. Jackie? I'll pass that to you.
So, in the study, we found five primary areas needing technical support and technical assistance, and they were the higher priorities. We will be talking further tonight about the NCOE preschool costs and, and transfer considerations. We'll talk more in detail about the NPA usage of behavioral aides and supervisors and the management of those resources and program offerings of trainings and PDs that may go along with that to build some significant capacity within your own district. But we also will be talking about the significant fiscal impact regarding your certificated and classified special education staffing and how to manage that more efficiently, as well as how to reduce potentially some over-identification of special education. It wasn't dramatic, but how there might be some more efficiencies to look at, not reducing significantly, but how we can look at helping in that area as well. And then Joanne later on will be addressing the secondary special education reboot. Next slide, please. So, what impact does the model have on Napa Valley? Because you are, of course, the largest district in the county, you are the highest usage of preschool in the county, and you are using preschool in the county of 82, almost 83%. And that costs over four and a half million dollars, and it's increasing every year pretty significantly. We might see a slight decrease this year, but that's still to be determined. It quarter one and quarter two might see a slight decrease, but we're not sure with quarter three and four. The estimated increase was $414,000. Your indirect cost just off the top is for, you know, almost a half a million dollars. So, when we look at, just looking at the moderate, severe, and autism non-intensive classes, we were able to compare apples to apples. I know that there were some questions about that in advance, and we appreciate one of the board members asking some questions in advance. And we compared, we recently received access to some of the students, or access to all of the preschool students, and we were able to see programs, it services of students, and we looked at salaries, and we looked at your salary, student staffing salary, and then we looked at how many students right now are in different programs and compared quarter one and two students with the fee for service. So, we looked at your fee for service, quarter one and two, and we compared your salary. And then we put them into different groups of services, and that's how we gave a, an estimate. And we also developed some types of programs as well. And, you know, we have experience with transitions and transfer of programs. We've transferred all types of programs from preschool through 22. And this is an estimate. The bottom line is that the preschool is able to be served in your district if the board so seems that it is time for you to do so. What was interesting is also that your numbers of students over the last couple of years in preschool stayed the same, yet the cost continued to rise. And I think that's where the concern rose with the special ed department and your superintendent, is that the numbers of the students rate stayed the same, but the cost continued to rise. District offices originally were designed to serve students from the districts that were most challenged, and perhaps Napa Valley is able to serve other students at this time. So, that's the model. Napa Valley has been challenged to see now. Next slide. Joanne?
Okay. Okay. So, prior to 2009 and 10, the county office operated a SELPA funding model for preschool that was essentially off, what they call off-the-top with district excess costs. And as many of you, and I'm sure members of the board are aware, that this was a model that was in place, but across all of California, there was a lot of concern expressed by districts that, that an off-the-top model where the, when the funding comes into the SELPA, the money comes off the top and goes to the county office. And that model worked for a long time, but when we switched to 602 funding and the whole funding model changed, districts didn't feel that it was equitable, and so they wanted, they really pushed for a different kind of model. So, therein is the birth of the fee-for-service model, and the district started 2009 and 10 under that structure, as did many districts throughout the state. But I think what districts have found is that the fee-for-service model is not too much unlike the excess cost model in that it didn't save the districts any money. And there were still a lot of excess costs for districts, and so the program transfer process kind of was born at that particular time. So, the difference between the off-the-top and the the, the current model is that despite the fee-for-service model, all federal and state grants go directly to the county office, so that's kind of off-the-top. And then the county office provides the quarterly cost for three categories of students. They serve non-intensive students, which are students that essentially receive speech-only or possibly occupational therapy. Intensive and autistic behavioral students are in a category where they are requiring far more special education programs and service delivery. The estimated cost, indirect costs were paid by the district each year, as you know, and no information provided had been provided on the actual cost for speech therapy and other related services in preschool. Next slide. Do we have another slide?
This is the next slide. What is the process for preschool program?
Okay, okay, good, thank you. All right, so, districts are not required to use the county office for services, so there is a process for you. If, if a district felt like they had the capacity to operate their own programs, a district can exercise the program transfer process, which is outlined in the education code, and you'll see there, it's 56207. It's very specific, and it requires each SELPA to have their own set of procedures for how you do a program transfer in each individual SELPA. And it is very different from SELPA to SELPA. So, if you look at Appendix D at the back of the special educational report, you'll see a detailed summary of the program transfer process in your particular SELPA. But there's very specific steps that have to be followed in order for a district to take back their programs. The first is a letter, well, it would take board action by the district to have a program transfer. The letter of notification must be sent to the county superintendent stating the desire to transfer the programs. The transfer will take effect no earlier than the first day of the second fiscal year after the date on which the sending district has informed the current agency. That's ed code language, and it's certainly difficult to follow. But for you, what that means is that services would begin on the first day of school for the 2023-24 school year. So, essentially, the notice is a year in advance. That gives the district, if they were to pursue a program transfer, the opportunity to build their program and to do many of the activities that are involved in setting up a new program. Next slide. What are the benefits of providing preschool services in the district? For you, and the district is very strong on this, that there's a, you're committed to your kids and families in the district and and serving those kids directly by your staff. In addition to that, early knowledge and awareness of the student makes the transition to the TK and K smoother. The district also has the capacity to provide a full continuum of programs and services for students with disabilities ages three and four. And Jackie and I can tell you that we fully support this for the district because we know what it takes. We've done these kinds of transfers, as Jackie said. We've built new programs for new philosophies that have come along, and we know what it takes to do that. So, if we didn't feel that the district had this capacity, then we wouldn't have, we wouldn't be putting it in as one of the benefits for your district. But we believe that you have that, that strong commitment to your students and families, that this would be- that this would be a very positive thing. The district has competent specialists, uh, to provide assessments and services that support the transition of your students from infant services to preschool. And, um, lastly, the reduction in the overall cost for the provision of services would currently in place would be a benefit for the district. Next slide. Jackie?
And unmute myself, sorry about that. Um, for the management of, um, resources switching from preschool. Um, overall, um, when we were looking at the analyzing all of the certificated and classified, um, services, staffing, programs, we discovered that there wasn't a comprehensive, um, chart of the staff. When you go into a district, you want to be able to see staffing of the certificated and classified with an, an understanding by site, by position, um, and who's in what class, for how many hours, serving what level of, um, position, if they're assigned to students and that it is triangulated with human resources department, the fiscal services and the special ed department. And the first thing you would think is position control does that for us. But it's position control is a numbers system. It's for payroll, it's for the business department, it's not for programs. And it really needs to be a system that communicates, um, for one another. And it does multiple layers of things. It's a checks and balances. It helps one another talk about, did this, for example, para educator move from site A to site B? Because a student transitioned from a resource program to a special day class more intensive program. And by golly, that student did require a one-to-one or a one-to-one faded from this student, but, but a new student moved in twelve days ago and needed, because an IEP was on another student over here. So we need a systematic spreadsheet that talks about that. And although we did see a, a spreadsheet, it didn't show something that was very manageable for all three departments to be able to put their hands on together. So we need something like that. And the special ed department can develop something like that. And then there needs to be strong monthly meetings to be able to have that accountability. And it helps to be able to know who can be moved without going to cabinet to say we need more staff. We can go to cabinet to say, hey, we can not hire anybody because we do have staff openings and we can move somebody over here. And we can, you know, split another staff member there. So we can do more efficient staffing this way. Um, the consultants also recommended, um, zero-based budgeting. And many fiscal departments kind of go, oh my goodness, zero-based budgeting. Some, so, some, um, assistant superintendents go, I love zero-based budgeting. Because what that is, is it's taking all the money, um, off the table and all of the budgets off the table in a department. And you start from ground zero and you build it based on starting from scratch. Instead of saying, um, the special ed department has forty-five million dollars at the end of the year and we're going to roll over that budget. And how much more do you need for starting the bu- starting next year? Instead, you start with, all right, we know we have this many classes because we have this many students. We start there, but then it's starting from zero. You start with those classes, you start with that many aides, so you start with the staff. But then you build, what else do I, we need? And the super, your assistant superintendent of fiscal, Rob, loved that idea. He was so excited about it. Terry Lynn is, let's do it. Okay, I'm ready to roll up my sleeves, let's do it. So that was really exciting and it's going to take some time. Um, and yes, you could do that this summer. It may not happen right away, but zero-based budgeting is a great way to really look at the efficiencies within the department. And, um, so that's what we recommend. Um, there were some, again, inconsistencies within the spreadsheets when we looked at position control, the AHR department and the spreadsheets in the special ed department. That's why we suggest monthly meetings or even bi-monthly meetings. So we can make sure that, um, the para educator one or the independent facilitators are in their place for X amount of hours the way they're supposed to be, because there is movement, especially with the classified positions. When we looked at the analysis of, um, certificated staffing, there was a question about who's overstaffed. Um, it's about becoming a little bit more efficient. You're already using resource specialists in, at multiple sites. It's how much more can you use resource specialists at multiple sites if it's appropriate? And we did analyze some of the, um, programs that looked at some of, a couple of the other classes that kind of ran at a real low level at four or five students. And it was questionable whether to, um, close a, a program and not run it a couple of years at four or five students. Um, or keep a secondary class open for multiple years at a low level of numbers of students. Um, would that, um, mean closing options? You would want to ensure that there is a continuum of options throughout your district. Um, and you would, you know, make sure, because it is the responsibility of the district, that you have a continuum of options. You do not have a responsibility to have the continuum of options at every single site. But you want to keep it in regional areas because you do not want students to be riding the bus for hours upon hours um, in your catchment, you know, in your, um, large geographical area. Um, and that's where your special ed director comes in and takes a look at all of that in her knowledge. So, um, there is a considerable amount of the overstaffing in the three core, uh, category, categories of classified para educators. And that's where we looked at those industry standards. And there's a chart in a little bit that takes a look at that. And we do have industry standards that we update frequently. And we look at that statewide. We interview variety of districts to take a look at what their, um, caseloads are. We compare it and we do industry standard, um, averages throughout the state to keep up with the, um, averages throughout the state. And then looking at, and we'll talk more about this again, but the over-dependency on the non-public agency aides. There's, you know, over almost two million dollars in, um, the non-publics agency aides that we need to see how to build the capacity within your own district. And there are ways to do that. And we have, um, found that building a strong professional development within your own district and slowly, um, training your own para educators and your certificated staff, advising them and training them in being able to fade out the non-public agency aides. Uh, after the professional development training has occurred, phasing them out through attrition and building your aides up allows the aides to be able to be faded out successfully without impacting any services at that, at that time. Joanne?
Okay, so continuing with the discussion about non-public agency, uh, it's not uncommon at all for school districts to use non-public agencies to provide services for students in special education. But it's generally designed for temporary, uh, staffing shortages. Uh, it's very expensive. Um, that's typically far more expensive to hire a speech therapist or a behavior specialist or any kind of, um, position like that. It's only used for temporary shortages because it is so expensive. It's far more expensive than a school district position. So it can negatively impact your special education budget. And we've seen that clearly, um, in your district in terms of the usage of, uh, non-public agencies, particularly, um, a long-term provider that provides behavioral education services. You, the district has had the same non-public agency providing direct services in all of your programs since two thousand and seventeen. So, and interestingly, um, I looked at other districts in the region and I found that all the other districts in the region are using the same agency for the same service. So, uh, it really, I think it's time for the district, you have expanded your behavioral intervention specialist program, uh, positions. I think you created those, I'm not quite sure when, um, those were created, Terry Lynn. But, uh, maybe you could address that. How long has it been?
We began, um, building, um, our behavioral team in two thousand and six.
Okay, so that's really good. But I think we need to expand it more so there is not that, that dependence on the non-public agency. The reason that the state allows that is that it was intended to fill, um, open, unfilled, short-term positions and provide service, direct services that were immediately needed when you have a shortage of staff like speech therapists and so on. So it's important that it doesn't become a permanent, um, uh, fundamental part of your programs. And that's actually, uh, what the staff indicated to us is that this particular, uh, provider is a fundamental part of your, uh, program delivery. And they're fundamental because they have both aides and every aide also has a direct supervisor. So you're paying for both of those positions, um, in the provision of each service. So the cost of, um, an MPA provider, for example, in the district could cost or did cost one point six eight mil- um, million to one point eight million. That's an awful lot of money. And it's time to, for the districts, as we begin to look at a lot of major projects, preschool definitely for one, this is another big area that needs to be looked at and to build that capacity so that you're not dependent upon, um, an outside agency. We have seen some improvement and reductions in this first quarter or first or second quarter of school. So that's encouraging. Um, we just have to see what happens and see if we were able to hold on to that for the remainder of the year. Next slide. Jackie?
Yes, okay, um, the, we understand that the Board of Education um, did charge the, the district to take a look at the one-to-one aides at the beginning of the year. And so the district did create, um, the SKIA Special Circumstance, um, Independence Assistance Handbook, um, SKIA Handbook. And districts throughout the state of California have this handbook and have been using this for at least, I know of, um, at least twenty years. And, um, it's, they're very comprehensive, um, evaluation procedures um, on how to determine whether a student needs or a classroom needs additional supports in the classroom. Or if a student needs additional supports in a classroom. And it's very specific. It's a comprehensive assessment. If a student requires, um, an evaluation, an assessment plan is developed. Um, it's a team approach. It's an assessment report is written, an IEP is developed, I mean, an IEP meeting's developed. I mean, it's a very comprehensive process. Um, goals are written, um, independence plans are written. It's to be monitored, reviewed frequently. Um, because it is a service that is pretty intensive. Um, it's one of the more intensive, some people would say, a, um, not a, it, it doesn't necessarily mean restrictive service, but it can be if not utilized properly, if that service is not utilized properly. So the district, as I said, developed the manual. But a manual is not meant to just sit there. A manual, you need to have appropriate training. And training occurs when people are brought in, you're trained. You're then, after your training, you are to be utilizing it, practicing it. People are to watch, make sure it's utilized with fidelity. Um, you follow through, et cetera. It's, it was reported that it's only been at only used a few times and there hasn't been very many requests. Well, that's okay if it's only been used a few times to be requested for a new SKIA or a new aide. But the point of it is also to also closely monitor ongoing one-to-one aides. And I think that's where we might be missing it a bit. We need to currently monitor current one-to-one aides, current independent facilitators and reevaluate the need for these current support services. So that's where we need to keep moving along and currently supporting staff. Continue to train and reevaluate the staff that have the training. Um, train more staff and support them. And so we need to keep going and monitoring these one-to-one para educator staff. And then utilize these IFs, the independent facilitators, on making sure that they're helping move these goals and these independent fade plans and monitoring if these fade plans do exist. Um, how are those being conducted? So I hope I'm making myself clear on that one. Go ahead, next slide. So the next slide is the chart. Um, and I, I tried to, um, put as much information and not too much information on this slide. So there's different levels of, um, para educators or classified. And there's the para educator, the independent facilitator and instructional assistant personal care. Para educator is used in the special education classrooms as well as the general education classrooms primarily, as well as the independent facilitators. Um, let me go back to the para educator. Para educators are, um, typically in the classrooms to support all of the students. Small group, large group, um, even one-to-one if they need independent supports. Um, independence facilitators, uh, originally, we, it was explained to us that they were to be used to support students with high needs, um, autism and, and behaviors. And it was, they were highly trained. Um, and, um, that they were the most hired in the district. There was a lot of them and that we need to look at why there were so many. And then there were instructional assistant personal care. And those are the ones that, for, um, toileting and hygiene and those that, um, have specialized medication, specialized, um, healthcare procedures have specialized medication, specialized healthcare procedures in the medically fragile, wheelchair-bound, et cetera. And then there's the MBIS aides, NPA aides with behavioral, they're the behavioral aides that come with supervisors. So when we looked at it, how many are used as one-to-one aides? How many are used as in-classroom support, whether they're in the general education classroom or the SDC classes, and then total? And I broke it down under how many people bodies, that's the personnel versus how many FTEs based on an eight-hour day. Because it's, you know, six point five hours, six hours, eight hours, so broken it down on an eight-hour day, so. There's fourteen bodies, forty-three bodies, et cetera. So I hope that helps you to understand how I broke down this chart. As you can see, there is a lot of one-to-one aides. Forty-three bodies of independence facilitators, and when we started looking at charts, a lot of the independent, independence facilitators, twenty-seven of them are actually used as classroom personnel instead of one-to-ones. And we saw them placed as classroom supports as a practice, and so we looked at the job description, and it is written in the job description that they would be placed for some small group supports, not just one-to-one. So it is written in the job description that they would support some small groups, not just one-to-one. So it is by design, so we may want to rethink that. Wanted to look at my notes. Again, we want to take a look at the NPA because we are providing a costly per week, twenty-two thousand dollars per week of costs of the NPA aides alone. That does not include the supervision.
Can I add something? I, I think for board members to focus on that, that one block there with the NPA aides, that shows that for the thirty-six weeks, the total cost is eight hundred and thirteen thousand one hundred and sixty-eight. So that, that really shows us that there has been a reduction. The total budget for that, for this year, I believe is over, a little over two million dollars. And so they're making good progress, I think, in some of the reductions. I just wanted to highlight that, that, that's what that represents.
That's an eight, that's for aides only, not supervision, though.
That's right.
Next slide. This is a bit redundant of what I've said because I combined the two of them. We want to utilize the independent facilitators for short-term staffing, kind of use, if I didn't say it already. And that is to utilize some of our independence facilitators as trainer of trainers, possibly that if they are in a classroom with other paraeducators, that they can utilize some of their skills to show the other paraeducators some of their strategies. To then phase out, reduce the paraeducators according to the industry standards. We found that there sometimes were several paraeducators in the classroom and less students in the classroom according to industry standards, or reallocate them. And then you can decrease some of the NBS, MBIS aides or independence facilitators and eliminate, meaning decrease, the NPA staff by providing the staff training as I spoke about. And reducing the one-to-one. Again, it was pretty redundant because I keep saying the same thing now. Next slide. All right, identification rate. District average, you're only a percent over the statewide average at this point, which is good, not too bad. We've seen districts in in a worse position. If you take a look at the speech and language, which is the over-identification above the state. This does include preschool where the other two does not include preschool. We, I want to give one example of, just one example of where you might be over over the block of, you know, are we over-serving or underserving? And over-serving, do you really need to over-serve speech and language? And this example could be happening in high school, but I want to give you this example of something we found in preschool. We recently received access to preschool IEPs. And because I do have a background in communicative disorders, communicative disorders, I looked at one of the IEPs that had speech services. And the speech services showed articulation errors for S and Z for a four-year-old. And four and five-year-olds are just beginning to articulate the S and Zs properly. So you don't start providing speech and language services at the time that they're developing those errors necessarily. So you wait for a bit of a delay. Now, it could be that you know, this is a nice RTI if we had time, but it's, you know, th- this is just, just an example because the question came up, could we be over-serving some of our students? It's on, I'm bringing this question up only because it came up. Are we over, possibly over-serving? So that could be an example for S and Zs, and the student is receiving preschool speech services. So, and over-identifying is speech and language. We do recommend, because you are over-identifying in speech and language, that your own speech and language therapist audit your own speech and language students, and they can cross-file, you know, cross-audit their own. And I did this in my own district. We had our Friday meetings. We took a pile of ten and we did our own audit. And, you know, they all got along and they had to and they, you know, it was a great own professional development. And they had conversation, why are you still serving the student? Well, here's my justification. And, you know, it was great personal development for themselves. And, you know, you're right, I'm going to do this as my plan. And some of them said, well, we're doing this because of this, and this is my plan for this, and it was really great, so. That's, that's a recommendation. Next slide. Joanne?
I'll just add, tag on to what Jackie said about speech at the secondary level. It's not uncommon. We did a similar process to Jackie. And a lot, my therapist found that a lot of kids were being retained at the high school level. And they had a speech background, and that was the initial reason they were placed in special education. And they, they were retained, or they maintained that, that IEP because they felt that the kids needed additional supports that they could access because they had an IEP, but they couldn't if they didn't have the IP, so. But there are, we did find a number of systemic problems in the secondary level, and these were shit. I'm sorry. Oh, these were shared openly with all of the staff. The, the students with disabilities are struggling in the A through G requirements. And they're, the special ed teachers are doing the best they can to try and support their, the kids are being sent back to special ed for instructional classes because they can't meet the requirements in the A through G, in the general ed classrooms. The special ed teachers, both RSP and SDC are teaching students. You also have a model in place that is, that exists in every district that I know of in California. And that is that high school teachers have, special ed teachers have two preps. They have one prep, which is the traditional prep for preparing your classes. And they have an additional prep for IEP meetings and maintenance of the IEP. So that is a common thing. It's an expensive thing. But it is in place almost everywhere that we go. But in addition to that, you have another option, which is called the directed studies classes. And, let's see, currently, special ed high school teachers have one to two additional periods where they're not teaching traditional classes. They're teaching what's called directed study. Is that the correct name of it? Pat, yeah, directed study. And so the theory behind it is to give individual student support to twenty to twenty-one students. But I, I heard loud and clear from administrators and from teachers who are actually teaching those classes that they don't feel that those classes are having the impact that they need to have. So there's a lot of questions around the effectiveness of the directed studies classes. The definition that I've heard from various staff, not from one individual, but several, is that the classes are open and they're, they're actually defined by the student. So some described it as a study hall, others described it as more of a a strategies instruction class. So it's very different from person to person. The other big issue that administrators and teachers shared is that special education students do not have access to their case manager. So there's, there's times when they don't, they don't ever see the student, and we really recommend that students have access to their case manager in some capacity, and that they also would ma- should maintain that same case management for the student throughout the four years rather than changing that every year. The total cost of the directed study for, for one year for six directed studies classes is a hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. So that is for six periods of directed studies. That's a lot of money. So I think, I think the district should really look at the effectiveness of that stud- of that particular process and whether or not that is a, a good process to use. So that's why we're recommending a, a secondary program reboot, we call it, to start to look at what kind of a model should you be using. Many districts throughout the state have used kind of a co-teaching model to varying degrees of success. It depends on the district. But there have to be some other ways for the district to, to look at that particular model. The district already has a secondary special education committee that Terry Lynn, you are, that's one of your responsibility areas, and, and you took the initiative on that and working with ed services as well, correct? So I think that's a perfect forum for you to begin to really dive into. I don't think you're going to get very far in changing the concept of two preps for high school. It's pretty much embedded and it's in your collective bargaining agreement, so. So those things are kind of challenging, but there's many issues in terms of the kinds of interventions that could be done or provided. Many of the, the teachers express, in fact, they're mourning the loss of the some of the computerized programs that they had before that provided interventions. And they felt that those provided a lot of support for students and they, I guess there were budget cuts and they lost some of those, so. They were concerned about that, but I think if you were to use your, your current secondary special ed committee to really dive into what are some other models that we can use effectively? What other districts can we go and look at that maybe have effective co-teaching models? I can tell you from our experience, districts everywhere are struggling with this at the secondary level. Some feel they're very successful in a co-teaching model. Others feel they don't have enough prep time and it's problematic. Sometimes special ed teachers feel like they're the aide in the class rather than the co-teacher. So there's a whole bunch of issues that you need to sort through. But I think that's the best forum, and so we recommend that you continue with that. Okay, next slide. The organizational district, structure of the district is comparable with other districts, the size and scope of your district. So we compared districts that had the same enrollment, similar special ed enrollment and, and looked at the positions that they had organizationally. It was very interesting that since two thousand and seventeen, all of the districts in your category have increased staff. So that, that just tells you that there's an increase in special education. There's a decrease in general ed enrollment across the state, and there's also an increase in need for management or supervisory positions in special education. So you're not over, but you don't need any new ones. We did identify and recommend that two of the psychologists on special assignment, which is a position that was started even prior to two thousand and seventeen and carried on year after year after year thereafter. So we recommended that those two positions be reassigned. And the staff has already acted upon that, so that is the plan for next year to implement that particular recommendation. But the good news is nobody loses their job because the psychologists were understaffed. And so they'll go back into the psychologist ranks, so that's a good thing.
Okay, fiscal. The important thing to look at here in this chart is not the general fund contribution percentage, but to take a look at the costs from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and the rising costs. The costs just keep rising. Three and a half million dollars more, general fund contribution to special education, two million dollars more. And you asked us to take a look at the efficiencies in special education. What can we do to help you help special education become more efficient without compromising the, the special education services to your students in your community? And we have provided you a report with recommendations to do just that, and I think throughout the next three years probably, because it will take a while to implement many of these recommendations to fruition. You'll be able to see a big change in the costs of special education. I'll turn this back to Joanne or to Pat or to the board for questions?
Jackie, could I just add one thing? Because I, I think maybe, yes. I think maybe the board or some members of the administration may have concerns about maintenance of effort.
MOE. I had that in my notes to talk about, yes. Thank you. When, when there are significant changes in the maintenance of effort, so that each district and SELPA, it's primarily the SELPA, has a requirement to maintain a cost of special ed within their SELPA. So you spend X amount of dollars within their SELPA. So you spend X amount of dollars, forty-nine million dollars in SELPA wide, all this money. You have to maintain those costs, special ed costs. And if you don't meet those costs, you get questioned and you get money withheld for the future. Unless you write for an exemption and meet other criteria. And there's certain areas in a criteria that have to be met and, or you can file for. One of those areas is if students move out of the area. Students don't require intensive services. Or if there is a change in services such, or a change in programs or services such as transfers. So when I went through transfers and we had a change in our MOE, we filed for a, we wrote a letter and filed for MOE changes. Also, because I also was part of FICMAT when we did studies and there were changes in MOEs throughout the state, other districts wrote changes to their MOE. So it is possible. And it is really does the SELPA meet their MOE? With you being the largest district, you would have the biggest change, but it is possible. And again, your changes won't come all at once. But yours changes would happen. But a transfer of services would warrant that. And a change in big contracts, a change in one-to-ones, those kinds of things.
Great. Thank you. I think that's an important. That last statement is important when, at a time when you may be considering, you know, a program transfer and there could be significant savings. So the district wouldn't need to have concerns that, that that would have a negative impact. So that's good. Thank you. Okay, I think that, that's it. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Murphy, and thank you, Dr. Martinez. We appreciate your very thorough presentation. I would like to now look to the board and see if we have any questions or comments.
Yes. Some of this is familiar to me because I did work at the school next door and I know that the sped students were often challenged by our A through G requirements. And we need to note that the Napa Valley Unified School District has higher standards for graduation, higher requirements than the state does. You know, that should always be remembered. I appreciate this. The numbers are certainly eye-opening and particularly with the money we're spending with non-public agencies. And it certainly is expensive. And I did appreciate the comments about the students pronouncing Fs and Cs, you know, because there, I'm just, you know, looking back when I taught elementary school and how much of it is is, are they, is it special education? Is that their destiny? Or is this developmental? They are really young children we're talking about here. So we need, we need to look at that too. And I too question the effectiveness of directed studies. And so that's, that's, I'm glad that they noticed that. I guess some teachers are mourning the loss of Reed one eighty. I'm not. And it's good to know that districts everywhere, this is something, you know, that we are struggling with. I have always been concerned about over identification. You know, particularly when I'd see somebody who was sixteen years old and it seemed like they had the potential to be a pretty good student. You know, we're trying to develop self-reliance and and I like the, what I like is getting the teachers together to talk about what can be done because the teachers do know a lot. And I think that this gives them, I guess the popular word now is agency. You know, I think, I think our teachers can come up with a lot of solutions. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Water. Trustee Gracia?
Sure. So I think tonight's report is pretty important as it identifies large areas of growth in delivery of our sped services. I'm encouraged that by potentially continuing to streamline our delivery of sped and taking back the the services from NCOE, we could potentially save up to two and a half million dollars, which is roughly equivalent of closing five elementary schools. While this alone will not be sufficient to close our budget deficits, it will certainly be a big help starting in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget year. I don't want to undersell the difficulty of this task. It's a big task and we require a significant investment of time and planning from our sped team. As a district, we'll need to focus not only on implementing these updated FICMAT recommendations, but also on simultaneously preparing to be the provider of sped preschool services to our district families. The twenty-three, twenty-four school year is potentially the first time as a district, we'll be offering sped preschool. And it'll be exciting to see the plan for provision of those services come together. The implementation of the updated FICMAT recommendations and preparation for sped preschool are both very worthwhile endeavors. And I have every confidence that we as a district are up to the task. As we are rapidly approaching the end of the year, I am reminded that we will soon be discussing our goal setting for next year. I imagine that these two topics will be top of mind during that discussion. I certainly have an interest in having both topics included in our annual priority setting meeting.
Thank you, Trustee Gracia.
Thank you. So I, I appreciate at the outset of the presentation, kind of focusing on the, the IDEA as the kind of that it's the source and the basis of our obligations to provide a, a particular level of service to, to students within our, our district. It's a federal law obligation that we have that we can't, you know, we can't really negotiate that, that minimal level, minimum level of, of service. So that kind of, we, we can't change that lever. We can't move that lever. What we can do is find the most efficient way to provide that, that, those services. And I, and, and that, that's kind of the, the, the load star through this whole report is we have a, a, a bar to meet, a bar to reach. And we, we can, we have to find the best way to use our limited resources to, to attain that, that, that goal. I think when you look at things that we contract out for, and this is, goes for non special ed contracts, you're paying, we're paying extra to obtain a service that, that we chose not to, to, to do ourselves, whether that's, we don't have the capacity yet, or it's something, you know, it, it's like hiring a handyman to do, you know, work at your home that maybe I could do if I watched enough YouTube videos, but it, it, I'm, it's worth it to me to pay more. In this context, we are, are paying extra for things that we should have the capacity to do. And, and it's helpful that, that we have consultants with such vast experience with, you know, across the state of what it takes to do those things. It's helpful to have them kind of analyze our, our system and determine that we, we should have that capacity. That's encouraging because then instead of us paying extra, a premium to provide those services. You know, the behavioral, non-public agency services, I mean, that's a, a pretty substantial premium we're paying. And the, the preschool services. We can internalize those costs and manage those costs within the system that we have specific control over. That's a very effective in a way of using our resources efficiently in that goal of, of providing a level of service that's required. What I so, so I guess, you know, anytime we, we talk about cutting costs or cutting positions or, or kind of reducing the, the, you know, anytime we, we, we had talked about that, my concern is always what impact that will have on the provision of those services? Are we cutting the costs at the expense of meeting that goal? And I think, you know, in, in, in looking through this report, it, it doesn't appear to me, I mean, it, it appears to me that the focus of this is not about, you know, cutting vital and important services. It's about managing and, and achieving a cost savings based on the efficient management of our resources. We are not cutting service. We are actually in the process of being more efficient, likely going to see a more effective provision of those services. And, and that to me is, is, is exciting both as a, a, a member of this board charged with managing the budget of this district because we, we save money at that, but also as, as someone who wants to make sure that we're serving the students who need these services the most. And, and, and so, you know, I I think, you know, it's, it's exciting to, to see forward on a lot of these, in a lot of these areas. I also do want to, I want to point out, the kind of start of the report was about looking at the two thousand seventeen FICMAT and the progress we've made on it. I, I want to remind people, and we've talked about this in the past, a lot of that work has been relatively recent compared to, you know, when the report came out in two thousand seventeen. And a lot of it was done during ti- you know, times where there were struggles related to, to COVID. And, and so I, I really want to commend the special education team and staff and the amount of work to, to get to eighty percent of the, the, the recommendations and goals on top of all the things they've had to do for, for during that timeframe. So.
Thank you, Trustee Dooley. And I think we would all agree with your gratitude towards Dr. Rasetti and her team. Would you, anybody else?
I just have one more thing to add. It's that I know that the staff has worked really hard on Aries and I'm really excited to see if we do decide to bring preschool to our district, that that transition and the integration of the preschool students into our mainstream TK or kindergarten classes. I, I think that'll make it really smooth for those students and not have the potential of losing services for them. I think that's really important because when you transition, like, let's say we move schools. There's always the, the possibility of, well, am I going to get the same services? But I really appreciate the work that Aries is going to allow us to have that transition, no matter where our students are in the district.
Thank you. We need to focus on one overarching goal. Increase the cost effectiveness of serving our students with special needs, which allows us to increase program effectiveness for our students. FICMAT study clearly outlined implementation strategies to achieve programmatic efficiency, identify the actual cost of specific services, align resources to services and strategies that improve outcomes at an efficient cost, while redesigning how special education is financially managed in the best interests of our students. Real time spent on learning and the skill of our educators are critical components of the success. Providing services in a cost-effective manner, understanding cost per service helps expand services, not reduce them. To improve efficiency and efficacy of programming, assess the identification process, improve outcomes, and do so cost effectively, we need to approach segments of the special education program differently. Execution of the recommendations based on the two thousand seventeen FICMAT and updated findings will allow us to create a comprehensive implementation plan that supports new best practices and will allow us to transition to more effective, pardon me, my contacts, more effective and cost-effective services. It is the board's responsibility to respond to data that highlights opportunities for improvement and demands financial oversight. We have limited finite resources and we have to allocate those resources responsibly with financial efficiency and with students as our primary focus. The proposed recommendations support the board's governance approach as it aligns with strategic goal number four, tactical proactive and efficient asset management. The numbers, as mentioned by a few trustees, are somewhat staggering. Indirect costs, general business expenses of kept-in-house could save up to five hundred thousand per year. That is the cost of running a small elementary school. Although your reference to two point five million, five was impactful. That is the, okay, our current model of service delivery is not cost-effective, non-public, as mentioned. Generally used as temporary support and is stated not long-term providers. But as referenced on page fifty-one, the cost of a single contract for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two was one point eight million. Without addressing expense inefficiencies, we could be positioned, as has been said, to save over two point five million a year. And again, as has been said, this will not happen overnight. This will take time. But we cannot turn a blind eye to the importance of managing our financial assets as it will allow us to maximize the value of our program while ensuring its stability and longevity. But I really appreciated the following recommendation on page fifty-five, number four. Increase level of understanding that special education is not a place, but a service in attempt to increase ownership of general education over students with disabilities. This recommendation speaks to the importance of teacher quality, not quantity. It speaks to the importance of our special ed programming in conjunction with our general ed programming. It underscores, underscores the importance of our special education students' first exposure to learning and our continued commitment to their learning trajectory. The current model of service delivery is once again not cost-effective, nor does it promote internal training and professional development for our teaching community. This is akin to a number of complex educational issues that we have successfully navigated. And our job is to do more and spend less. Cost-effectiveness, an item we have heard throughout this evening, does not mean taking something away. It means getting the same or better results for less cost. And as the special education report stated, we will be team building, partnering with the business office, general ed educators, our instructional team, human resources, and with executive director Rasetti and her team to create a collaborative framework for student success. It is essential that we address the financial imbalance that exists in the current budget. It is essential that we reduce expenditures where there's an opportunity for improvement. It is essential that we exercise financial governance in concert with program efficiency. And the execution of this change will be difficult. We will not see improvement with just understanding. We have to apply the recommendations and strategies and take action in order to see results. And I support adopting the recommendations as stated. I think that does include our board comments. Trustee Water, did we receive any public comment on an agendized item at publiccomment@nbusd.org?
We did not.
Ma'am, is she in the room? Do you have any public comment?
I do. My name is Sandy Trebeklin. I am a speech language pathologist at the Napa County Office of Education. I work in the Early Childhood Services Department. It is one of the best programs I have ever worked in. It is not above what is required. It is a program that's not only renowned in the state of California as an inclusive program with both typically developing children, but special education children, but it is renowned. with both typically developing children, but special education children, but it is renowned outside of the state of California. There are people that come to this area to see this program. I currently have forty-five children on my caseload. Off the top of my head, four to five of those children are only speech therapy students, not speech and language needs. Many of the children on my speech therapy caseload have more severe disabilities. You may not be aware of this, but autism is on an increase in being identified. We have very involved children in our program. I am proud that we serve children in our programs with those type of needs. Yesterday, I was in a classroom with a student, not just one, many that have full-blown autism, very severe. But they are being supported in an integrated classroom. I don't know what this district will do if they take it back. But my guess is, in order to save money, they will create special day class programs. Research shows that that is not the best way for children in special education to learn. And it also shows that children who are typically developing, when they are in a integrated setting, they begin to understand that there are children with special needs and they deserve respect too. So by putting special children in a special class, then those children who are typically developing start thinking those children are special. I would seriously ask you to consider this decision. I know that this is a very difficult decision for your board. I know your district is hurting. I understand that, and I would not want to have to be in your shoes. But I am not a handyman that is being pushed out or spread out from my services. I have a master's degree. I earned every minute of my education, which I apply to the students in your preschool programs. Thank you.
Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. First speaker is Joe Schunk. Go ahead, please.
I dare say I have a unique combination of experiences over the last twenty-five years plus. In this case, as a parent of special ed students. By way of context, one son briefly attended the Napa Infant Preschool Program, NIP, and both sons attended the Winton Preschool. You, the board, are uniquely own the values of the institution. There is, um, it it is hard to quantify the value of having a vertically integrated and aligned system. Every time there is an organizational boundary, CELPA, NCOE, NPAs, grade level span change, there are gaps in communication, unity of purpose, values, motivations. Please pay attention to those boundary scenarios. Special ed requires active management and engagement by the entire cabinet continuously. Continually evaluating data, policies, procedures, options. If you get distracted even for a brief period, the odds are it will be deja vu all over again. Constant vigilance to the process is required. Questions to ask, does the district model include a weight to fail, either in theory or in practice? If so, pushback, it's detrimental to costs and to the kid. To avoid unnecessary constipation, you may want to be specific as to which either or both programs of pre-K special ed you're referring to, either NIP or Winton. Be prepared for pushback. Parents will be anxious about changes to the status quo. Any change, good, bad, indifferent, it doesn't matter. There is no cop on the disability beat. Laws supporting those with disabilities are largely enforced by those with disabilities and their families. NCOE will tell you that you can't possibly do as good a job as they do. Poppycock. There will be grumbling from staff you employ based on new or changed responsibilities and expectations. As noted by the trustees, it's not just about money. A meaningful education, including special education supports and services about is about a civil right this nation granted in nineteen seventy-five to children with disabilities. Like many civil rights, it remains aspirational in some respects, but there has been progress, slow halting, but progress nonetheless. The Supreme Court has opined that an IEP should be reasonably calculated to enable the child to achieve passing marks and advance from grade to grade. In conclusion, I am generally supportive of a model that integrates, aligns, and reduces confusion in special ed.
Thank you, Mr. Schunk. Mr. Michaels, do we have any additional speakers?
Uh, we do. Uh, next speaker is Cindy. Go ahead, please.
Hi, good evening. Um, just for clarification purposes, my name is Cindy Biederman. Yes, I am a trustee for NCOE board. However, I am speaking as a grandmother of three daughters that, granddaughters that go to the Napa Valley Unified School District School. Um, I I get the position you guys are in. I completely understand it. And looking at all your contracts makes perfectly good sense. I want to, as as a parent or grandparent, um, you know, I'm hearing some of the comments that you guys are making about the over identifiers and so on. But I don't want you guys to lose sight about the ones that you're not identifying. Um, and my own real quick personal story is, I've had three girls that went through the system, even starting kindergarten. I'm noticing there are some reading discrepancies, word discrepancies, there were speech discrepancies. I had to go up until, even I went to her teacher, I went to the principal of up to through third, second grade. It wasn't until we pulled the girls out of that school, that I took them into another school, demanded the test that we were not allowed to have or or never deemed necessary to have at the other elementary school. The one that I was concerned about was tested and she was identified as phonological disorder and um some speech impediments. Even though we take the kids to regular physicals, you have your hearing tests and and the schools get hearing test. We didn't find out until this past week that she could not hear from the decibels of fifteen hundred to six thousand, which is speech in one ear. So my frustration grows. It's not with you guys or anything else, other than the fact that I had to fight for three years to get hers, to get an IEP. But when I what I hear over identifiers and stuff is what I'm trying to say is what you don't see in the numbers and the savings, which I understand you guys got to do. Look at more than that, please. Look at the part that you're not identifying. Look at the kids. I have, now she is now fourth grade. Now we got to play catch-up. Once we're able to get her to be able to hear adequately, we have to play catch-up. It's been a struggle for a family and this is, I'm, you guys, some of you guys know me, I'm pretty persistent. But it's been a struggle, so I would kind of worry about the other parents. Um, they really don't know what to do, or maybe not as outspoken of what to do. So while you're looking at your budget and looking at the cuts and looking at streamlining, please do not like the streamline, drop out even more students that should be helped that are not getting that help. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cindy. Mr. Michaels, do we have additional public comment?
Uh, there's no further uh public comment at this time.
And I do apologize to our um remote trustee. Um, trustee Gonzalez Morris, did you want to, um, did you have a comment? Or may I move forward?
Thank you, President Jankowicz. No comment at this time. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Dr. Mosetti?
Yeah, so um before we move to the action segment of the agenda, I want to thank the trustees for their comments. Um, thank you for the public comment that was made as well, very important points that have been illuminated. Um, I want to start out with um a huge thank you to Strategic Consultation for Schools. Um, the the rigor and depth of the study um was very, very evident um for anyone who reviews it. So I I know the lift and the labor that it takes. Uh, but I know that you can't um generate a comprehensive in-depth study if you didn't have the full cooperation of our staff. And so I want to thank Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings, um, our Executive Director of Special Education, Terry Lynn Rossetti, and the entire special education team, also the finance team, human resources, um, and um our our leaders on the instructional division side, who are also in general education because it does really take engagement with all segments of the organization in order to, again, render a a study that is this comprehensive. A lot um has been said, of course, uh through the sharing of the highlights of the study and through um your in-depth reactions as a school board and even some of these um public comments that came our way. But um I just, as superintendent of schools, want to um highlight um some key salient, salient factors that I think are important for us to hold as we advance this work. So um, you know, I I, our our special education students, um, they they are, our students, all of our students need us. Um, our special education students need a system to be highly, highly responsive um to their learning differences, to their um behavioral uh differences. Any of, any of the academic interventions that they're required in order to be successful in school and order to also have access to a high-quality education. So we need to start out with that always being our primary light and guide in this work. Um, but you know, ha- ha- as has been mentioned, um, in order to accomplish that, we also need to be smarter with our resources. And you know, that sometimes feels tricky, right? We think that when we're looking at cost-saving strategies as illuminated in the report, we automatically think that, you know, this is going to equal a reduction in programs and services. And like I think President Jankowitz mentioned, for us, it's, we have to look at quality and we have to look at a smarter, more strategic use of our reso- resources in service to our kids. So, you know, something really simple, um, if we were to look at the NCOE program, and I appreciate the comments around the quality of the program, we are spending half a million dollars on administrative indirect cost. Those are, that's, that's half a million dollars that do not go to direct services to children. So that those, when I say things like smarter with our resources, that that's a primary example of what I am referencing, right? Um, so you know, those are the kinds of things that we need to pay attention to when we're naming things like efficiencies in the system in terms of implementing the program. Um, I do want to say, specific to the preschool, uh, the findings around the preschool, um, I have had a preliminary meeting with Dr. Namco, um Deputy Superintendent Josh Schultz from NCOE alongside our um Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, uh, Mr. Rob Manguala. And we have expressed to them, um, you know, our position based on the findings of the report. And we look forward to working with NCOE staff. They are a a partner. We have a long history, right? They're our county office of education, so we look forward to being able to successfully collaborate with them in order to have a success- successful transition of the program. And we appreciate, just like most of the work that we've had, the challenging work that we've had to do in the district. You know, you could look most recently at at the middle school redesign work. We took a year of planning and preparation before implementation. Um, the the way this will work, there will be a year of planning, preparation, collaboration between the two agencies. Um, and we, you know, we need to have controls in place. Right now, the way things are structured, we, as the district that funds the program, NCOE provides the program, but we fund the program, we currently have no controls in place. And we cannot have large-scale programs with no controls in place, particularly in a declining enrollment environment where we have to constantly be monitoring our resource allocation, because with declining enrollment comes declining revenues. So to have any large-scale programs in a school district, period, but especially in a school district with declining enrollment is um very financially, it's risky and it's irresponsible. So we have to make sure that we have controls in place. And the current um design um in terms of the oversight of the program, we have no controls in place. So that needs to be rectified in this environment, or we can find ourselves in a very, very risky situation. Um, one thing that has not been specifically mess- uh, mentioned around the preschool, just to make sure that the public's clear and the board's clear. Um, we uh currently, the NCOE preschool program serves zero to five. So I think it was stated, but I just want to reiterate it. They will continue to work on zero to two, and we are talking about three and four-year-olds. Um, so this is uh bringing over three and four-year-olds. And um it's actually a a very appropriate time for this reconsideration. Um, our governor is putting a lot, um, our state superintendent is putting a lot into early learning and and early childhood education. We are going to be in the midst, over the course of the next two to three years, expanding transitional kindergarten, having more four-year-olds in the system, that's going to become a grade level in our system. And so it it's a really um appropriate time for us to just take a go- global, comprehensive look at how we are handling early learning education. All of the research shows, all of the research shows that um a a student's future can very well be determined based on how they are performing at third grade. Which means that the earliest years in special education or general education are very, very critical years to ensure that a student reaches their maximum potential in the years that we're serving them in our um, in our system. And so we want to make sure that we're doing a really great job. So as we start the, moving the work forward around early learning related to the state's uh focus on transitional kindergarten, this is an appropriate time for also to take a look um at this program in bringing in our three um to four-year-olds on the special education, from the special education NCOE program into um our NVUSD um, a school community and connecting with them early, right? As we build out our early education programs in the district. And to uh trustee Gracias' point around annual priority setting, you know, um, whether it's this year or next year, I think, given that focus and given what the research says about third graders, um, we we will probably be coming to you around considering, you know, looking at some focus priorities around early learning, given all this transition that is on the horizon in special education and general education. The last point I want to make is that this board did set an annual priority around multi-tiered and intervention support systems on the behavioral and academic sides. Um, we have made tremendous progress this year as an organization in building the infrastructure to be able to um identify students that need behavioral and academic interventions in general education. Right? And um I want to um applaud the comment that came um not from uh trustee Biederman, but um Grandma Biederman, who talked about, um, you know, her real-time story. And and that's really not a special education issue. That's actually a general education issue. School districts often um have a lot of improvement work to do in identifying academic and behavioral uh needs of students on the general education side, putting interventions in place, implementing them in a sustained way, and then monitoring their impact, right? And we raise our hand as a school district that that has been an area of improvement for us. And that is why you, as a board, set that annual priority. That's why we established a department in the district, uh led by Director Sarah Knox, of Intervention and Prevention Services, because we need to pay close attention in general education, have systems in place to identify our students' needs before they go um on to uh having their needs met potentially in special education. And we have a, as a system, have have done, um, you know, uh, we've done the best we can, but we didn't have that focus in building those systems. We've built those systems and I think we've showed you a lot of the data tracking systems that we've developed via Ares Analytics. I think trustee Chu mentioned them. So I, all of this work kind of comes together as part of a very complex puzzle in meeting the needs of our students, using our resources, um, being smarter with our resources, all while trying to serve students um better than we do today. And that is our goal um with the report. And that is our goal with the report that we're asking you to adopt. And it's going to be a lot of work, but our students deserve us to do this, this important work and this hard work in order to better serve them. So that is our commitment. Even though it feels like sometimes these studies are about the finances, I think it's important to kind of illuminate all of these important, important things that are, come all together to connect so that, again, that we can better serve our students. Before we move President Jankowitz to the action segment of the agenda, I just want to invite, I know Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings and our Executive Director, Terry Lynn Rossetti, have been deeply involved. Do you have any comments that you would like to make to wrap up the discussion segment of the agenda?
Thank you, Dr. Masetti. Yes, I just wanted to say a few words. One is that I know because of the collaborative nature of our school district and how we go about problem-solving or solution-finding, that we are well-positioned to implement the recommendations that are in this updated analysis of our FICMAT recommendations. And so just wanting to point that out, that we are well-positioned to implement the recommendations. And also just to let the Board of Trustees know that we will continue to do follow-up presentations around our progress at the Board Advisory Committee meeting. So we will continue to do that, to show the progress we're making and some of the work that's already been done and underway. So that will be a continued practice as we move forward. And, and I do appreciate that as the Board Annual Priority Number Four, that really had us focus on becoming more fiscally responsive around how we are utilizing our sped, or how we are providing our special education services. So that's all I wanted to sort of add to the conversation and just appreciate Dr. Martinez and Ms. Murphy in their report and how they've gone about gathering the information. So thank you both. Director Rossetti, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I would also add, I'm looking forward to working with Ms. Murphy and Dr. Kirk Martinez as we move forward to implement all of this. And I can share that the special education team is looking forward to the opportunity to be more efficient in serving our students.
Yeah, and thank you so much to both of you again for your hard work. I think Executive Director Rossetti brings up a good point. We do plan to have Strategic Consultation for Schools to provide the technical assistance with some of these transitions over the course of next year to make sure that they have the supports that they need as staff in order to implement this with integrity and do it in a high-quality manner.
Thank you, Dr. Masetti, and please bear with us. We are going to take a brief five-minute break. And we will be back very shortly. Thank you for your patience. Thank you very much for your patience. We are now moving on to C, action items. Our first, under General Services, Discussion and Approval of Resolution Number 2229, authorizing continued use of remote teleconferencing provisions pursuant to AB 361 in Government Code Section 54953, approval of discussion and approval of Resolution Number 22-29, authorizing continued use of the remote teleconferencing provisions, again pursuant to AB 361 and Government Code Section 54953. May I get a motion?
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia, second, second by trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, to roll call vote. Vera?
Yes, trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Ricer?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez Maris?
Aye.
Trustee Shu?
Aye.
Trustee Dooley?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vera. Instructional Services, A, Special Education Report Recommendations. The approval of the recommendations detailed in the report in order for NVUSD administration to implement programmatic improvements and strategic resource management related to special education programs and services.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Dooley. And I'm just going to ask if we have any additional public comment? No? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Alvin motion passes. Next, we move to D, adjournment.
Adjourn?
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Dooley. All in favor?
Aye.
We are now adjourned. Thank you.